Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet tonight on behalf of our county, our students, our teachers. Continue to guide our board and our administrators to make good decisions in regard to our school system and continue to bless this county and keep us protected. In the name of your son, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need approval of our agenda. Do we have any adjustments to our agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Approval to finalize our agenda?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chairman, to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
We need to approve our minutes of the March meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor? Contrary to the saying, what about our special call meeting in March? Do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Have a second? All in favor, we approve the March special meeting? Okay, we need to approve our minutes of April regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from our April meeting as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that takes us down to our bills and accounts.
Madam Chair, we have delegation of the agenda.
Delegations up. Apologize.
Madam Chair, with again comments from our meeting there in April, we do have Melissa Saunders with us tonight from the LHS Band Boosters as a parent. And again, we invited her back when we had our April meeting due to the limitations we had at that time that have now been lifted. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Saunders if that would be accepted, Madam Chair.
That'd be great. I think she was out in the hall and I forgot about that.
Where do I need to go?
You can have a photo.
Do I need to get my mask on?
Oh, you're fine. I think it's Melissa.
I've not done this before, so forgive me.
We normally asked you three minutes, but we want to hear what you have to say. So you go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, my name's Melissa Saunders. Was elected Vice President of the Band Boosters, I guess, last year. And I would like to thank you, Madam Chair, for the privilege of being able to address the board. And so, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Madam Secretary, I think. Thank you, Madam Samsler. Thank you, Dr. Brown. So, forgive me for not having done this before. So, I am here just to ask the board on behalf of the Lebanon High School Band what the board's plans are for the trip reimbursement that was canceled back in March of our trip to New York. So that is my question to you, and then I can answer any questions that you may have.
Have you tried to ask for money back from people if you have positive?
Sir, my understanding was that, forgive me here, that the contract was through the school. And Dr. Brown had canceled the trip on the 10th. Or on the 10th, I believe, the trip was canceled by Dr. Brown. And so, our contract with the travel agency was through the school. So we have no grounds to contact through them. They're not responsible or liable to pay us. It would be Dr. Brown who canceled the trip. Now, on, let me see here, on Tuesday, the 10th, I called the travel agency myself to say that I understand that the trip is being canceled or maybe being canceled through the school. Understandable, with liability, but can we set up a contract ourselves as individual parents and students who are willing to go to New York since we've paid the money? We each paid $7.50 apiece. And it wasn't donations. We either paid for it out of pocket, or we raised money through, we had a car show, we sold fruit, we sold donuts, we, Tupperware, I think. But it wasn't through donations. It was through services given as far as the car wash, or it was for some of the candles, such as the fruit, the donuts, whatever. We bought many donuts ourselves. And so, it's our money. And as far as it going through the school, that was how it's set up. It wasn't individual accounts through the academic travel agency. Greg Shipley is the owner. I spoke to Tim. He was a travel agent that I had asked a couple of questions as far as what we could bring, what we couldn't bring, and things like that. So, on the 10th, Dr. Brown had told us that, and that would have been that Tuesday, that the contract was canceled. And, but we could have set up an individual contract, and had that been allowed to have happened, it would have been canceled, as everyone knows. The world changed that Friday when New York, when Broadway shut down and everything else. So probably what would have happened was, is we would have left on that Thursday night at nine, which would have been the 12th, and we would have gotten up to New York on Friday. And I'm sure we would have been told to turn around. Then the travel agency would have been liable and responsible for returning all of our money. But since the contract wasn't an individual contract, which could have been set up, the travel agency is not responsible or liable to pay us a dime. So sir, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but we're all individually out, $7.50 apiece. Madam Chair?
And I'm sorry. Let me also interject. I'm the Band Booster President, Brandy Taylor. What we need to also state is we were not given an opportunity to maybe reschedule the trip for months in advance so that we wouldn't lose our money. The crux of the matter is that we were, we canceled two days before we were scheduled to leave for the trip.
That's not my question.
Yes.
My question was, is have they attempted to get money back?
Because it is through the school now, we are out of the picture. It has to go through you.
You're not out of anything yet, okay? Don't disrespect. I'm for helping you, okay? I'm helping you. I just want to find out if any, if any thing has been done to try to ask these people for your money back.
Was there any funds recruited, I guess? You're asking if there was anything recruited?
Yeah.
That's something that I took care of. I spoke to Mr. Shipley. He actually called me last week and told me that there were vendors that have reconsidered. They were, again, no, but they have reconsidered due to how this thing has evolved. He didn't think it was going to be a lot of money, but he said it was going to be some, and he would be getting back with me. And I haven't heard back from him yet, but again, it's probably going to be a small amount.
Do we need to get Benny involved to write a letter? Or has he already?
No, no, that wouldn't be my recommendation, because we did, you know, again, we did cancel the contract, absolutely.
I know.
Yeah. So there's legal grounds for them to help us at all, actually. But yeah, I mean, I don't believe, have a legal counsel provide that would be a lot of...
This is my opinion, and I think, I think we need to help the ball. And I have, whatever the amount is that should be out of, is what I think we need to reimburse and force on one another and the band itself.
What's your name, sir?
Ryan Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Boston.
And because what we need is protect the kids. And I think we have an obligation, I personally think we have an obligation, the board has an obligation to reimburse the band and parents who, you know, without, I'm just saying, at it. I don't know to what extent, I'm personally, I'm for all of it, but I can't speak to the bill of six. And, but I would like to have, I don't have them what it is, but...
We can get you that information, sir. We can get you the, to the penny.
That's just my opinion, and I don't know how you feel about that.
That's funny. I have it as an action item later on for the board's consideration. And I'll be, you know, if I don't hear from Mr. Shipley through the next handful of days, I'll be reaching out to him, asking him if he's got a final refund dollar amount.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to, I would, I wouldn't care to spend a few dollars for attorney to write a letter to him. He had to, can't even make the shop.
Was this, I know it's going as leaden and man, was it like a event that you all would want to compete at, or was...
No.
It was a learning opportunity, sir, for the kids. Brandy, myself, some other adults were going as chaperones. We paid for our background clearance, which was out of pocket. We went along, not paid for our own trip to be chaperones for, and, you know, of course to go with our kids, but they also made chaperones. So they were going to see the New York Philharmonic. They were going to be able to ask questions. They were going to, we were all going to see Broadway play. And it was a learning experience.
How many of the band members were gone?
We had 41 that were planning to go. Of that, I'm not...
Did all of that 41, the $750?
Yes. It was $750.
Okay.
Or did some of, was some of it raised?
Some of it was raised, but however, how our Band Boosters do raise money, we, because of this being a trip year, and we had planned this for a year, to go, every dime that was raised from concession stands, car shows, anything that we did was solely earmarked for that child that raised the money. It is in an account with their name on it to go towards their trip. It was not, none of the money that was raised went into a general fund as Band Boosters. It went to the specific child that raised it to go towards this trip. Then what was left, parents paid out of pocket. They paid for themselves, and what was, what else was left, we paid out of pocket. Every dime is accounted for and can be accounted for. And the total comes to a little over $32,000 that we're out.
I don't know how the, the band, how this will handle things, money being raised in the Band Booster account for that kid. I don't believe they'll take that out or not, because that band account belongs to the school, so that's a different situation there, so.
But it was raised by the Band Booster.
I understand what you're saying, but the school band account is a different account than our account. It's that way. Even though in the long run, it's still all our, but it's still a different, it's a different structure, something.
How many chaperones pay?
I do not have that information with me. I apologize, but I can get it for you. I think we had maybe 18 parents going. I'm not, I'm not sure. Like I said, I don't have that information. I apologize not to have that.
Well, like I said, I don't, that's just my opinion, I don't know how these people, the rest of you, feel about it. We, I think we need to try to work with you and try to help you. I don't know what the final figure would be, but I don't want anybody to be, feel like, personally feel like, kind of poppy on something like that. And I will say this too, you know, Mike, I'll be thankful because if you had them, some of you might have been up there sick.
And wasn't everything, everything was actually canceled before y'all were in there anyway, or wasn't it?
No, actually, we would have been on our way. We were supposed to...
So you got there, everything was canceled, you got there.
And then, and then the travel agency would have been responsible and liable to refund every penny. Mr. Bostick, to address what you were saying there as far as, I understand the letter of the law, and I also understand the spirit of the law, that as Brandy was saying, and as I was saying, that we, Brandy, myself, other parents who could work with the kids in concessions to raise money for my daughter Ellen's account, for Sydney's account, for whoever's kids.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I worked in concession stands too, and helped out at schools and stuff like that, but what I worked for, I would give to the school.
But that's what I'm saying, it wasn't given to the school. We were working for that account, so we could still...
But I work, what I'm saying is I work to help kids, my kids.
No, what I'm saying is, as Brandy was saying, sir, that from this year, at this time, that that was, and the kids were working too, selling in the stands, to, to raise money from what we raised with concessions. So sir, I have no problem with if the money was going to be placed back into their account to be used.
You're understanding, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm saying that we can re, I vote to reimburse the band, the school, the Band Booster. Now, if the school wants to pay you all your own money back, if we give them the money, then that's up to the school system, not us, what I'm trying to say.
No, and that's what I was saying, sir. I think that we, we're, as a school board, we're not able to disperse your, your funds.
We'd have to disperse that.
Well, no, that's what I was saying.
If the board does vote, and we will address this on down in our meeting, I think, I think it's there, right, Dr. Brown, for us to address? And at that point, if, depending upon the feeling of the, of the board...
I think you're right. I have no problem with that.
We have sent the...
But at a certain extent...
To a certain, and personally, I'm glad that, that you all remained in Russell County, because it probably could have been a catastrophe had, had several folks gone there and came back in, and it could have been a bad thing. And I'm glad, I'm glad that Russell County citizens are as safe as they are at this time, you know, so.
Yes.
It could have prevented a bad thing.
The right thing was done, I believe.
However, it would have been nice if we had been given the option to reschedule for months in advance. And we could have had more of a late to stand on if we had needed to cancel.
I agree with you on that.
Right. So at this point...
But it wasn't, we got to deal with what, we just got to deal with what we got.
Now we're doing damage control. I understand that.
So if, we will address it further down in our meeting, and dependent upon the vote of the board, and once the money, we go back into Lebanon High School. We're not allowed to give individual money, but we can put it back to Lebanon High School. And if you all get your $750 and...
Y'all might want to donate back to me.
And once everything's safe again and...
Well, I don't understand how you can expect to get money back that you raised when, I mean, if you have a, if you have a check saying that you personally put this into this fund.
Right.
I can see that, you know, we could try to help that. But just to say that you raised this money in the Band Booster's name, I mean, the school system didn't, didn't benefit from your all's money. I mean, it wasn't like we took it and done it. It was a bad situation, and we didn't, we didn't benefit from it.
No, but even if we are not...
I want to say this also, I support Dr. Brown and his decision, and if he hadn't have, if he hadn't have done it, I think you would have went on. That's my personal opinion.
What's your name, sir? I can't see from here.
Tim Ball.
What's that, sir?
Tim Ball.
Mr. Ball, I appreciate what you're saying, and I've never disagreed with Dr. Brown or anybody. I understand liability, that this county should have canceled the trip, with what's going on, but also through the travel agency, we could have rescheduled as citizens, and as everybody knows, it would have been canceled. And then the travel agency would have returned the money. And Mr. Ball, as far as, I'm not clear on what you were saying there about the, the raising of the funds. Again, we didn't go out there saying, please give me however much money for, for the band. We went out there, Ellen, Sydney, all the other children, and said, would you like to buy donuts? We are doing this as a fundraiser. Would you like to buy fruit? We are doing this as a fundraiser, because my daughter, Brandy's daughter, everyone else's daughter's son was raising money by doing this to, for the trip. So it was for individuals, and individuals were out there selling it. And Mr. Bostick, to address what you were saying, some cases, I don't think I was clear. And yes, I'm all for, if the money went through the school as it had to, because that's how it was set up, then it can just as easily go back into the children's accounts that can be used for a trip hopefully next year, or the year after, or whenever, you know, the world comes back around again.
However, we also need to remember that there were five seniors that won't get the opportunity to go on another trip. And they, they lost out completely.
Well, they may not have lost out, they may have saved their lives, okay?
Oh, and that's, that's not the issue. The issue is that we weren't given the opportunity to reschedule.
That's too expedited, and that's huge, that's all.
That's fine. I'm getting that.
Mr. Bostick, again, I understand the county's position as far as liability, having canceled the trip, but we also could have been given the opportunity to sign the contract on our own and to hip on and then have it been canceled. People didn't stop going anywhere that weekend. My daughter and I and a friend, we went to, to Atlanta so that our girls could do something since, since the trip was canceled. Now, were we foolish? I don't think so. We weren't doing anything differently than we are now. We were keeping our distance. We weren't hugging strangers. We washed our hands. So, again, this, this is about the money. This isn't about the liability, but this is about who should be responsible for the returning of the money.
Well, I think we will address that.
Thank you. I think we understand where you're coming from, so we will talk about it.
Well, Mrs. and I appreciate all of your, your time, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're down to our bills and accounts. Has the board members had an opportunity? Do you have any questions? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve payment of our bills.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor of paying the bills? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody don't want to pay, what's that?
Well, I don't want that.
Okay, Dr. Brown, your resignations and retirements?
Yes, Madam Chair, again, this is a leftover item. This entire section is from our April board meeting, so it is a little lengthy, but you have a list primarily of individuals that have chosen to retire, and we need the board to approve.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve our resignations and retirements? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, personnel, new personnel and transfers?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have, again, a lengthy list dealing with, again, the replacement process for these individuals. We start this as early as we can. Again, it's just quite the process to go through the interviews, especially now with the Zoom environment that we live in and doing these interviews again through the computer system. But we have a fairly lengthy list, and again, this is for the board's approvals we can move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Do I have a motion to approve the new hires and transfers? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do I have a second?
I'll say that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Okay, approval of the tenure of Dr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Chair. Once a year, we have before the board those individuals that transition or are eligible to transition from probationary status to continuing contract. This is something that the board, again, will look at and approve annually. This is the list for FY '20.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the continuing contracts?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Action items, Dr. Brown, I guess we're down to the Lebanon Band Booster.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have three items for the board's consideration tonight for action items. The first one does deal with the LHS Band Fund, the Band Boosters. The background that I have for the board tonight, again, the LHS Band Boosters have raised funds and will pay for a trip to New York City. The group is set to leave for New York City on Thursday, I believe, the 12th, and return on the 16th of March. On the 9th, made the decision to cancel the trip due to the deteriorating health conditions in New York City and surrounding areas. They're speaking as recently as last week with the president of academic travel, Mr. Greg Shipley. They're working on refunds from a few companies that have changed their stance on offering any type of refund. He believes it will be a small amount at best. Recommendation from the staff is to reallocate funds with legal counsel's blessing and guidance and have this fund returned back to whole status. At that point in time, I'll ask legal counsel and Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Long to go through that process and determine appropriate reimbursement of those funds.
Okay, do we need, do we intend to address anything, or...
I, I, I feel like we need to table it until we see how much money we're going to get in. And I really think that, like Tim said, the one, the money was raised, I don't see how we can just get it back. I think the one that's out of pocket, we do. And that's my opinion. But I think we need to table this until we see how much money we are going to get back, and, and then move from that point.
I agree with Mr. Parsons on, on what he said about waiting until we see a figure. I mean, it's hard for us to prove something when we don't really know the full amount we're dealing with exactly. I just think it's good business to get these figures. The president of Band Boosters said she could come up with those figures, and hopefully you'll get it back to us in time, maybe for next month. I mean, it doesn't matter as long as you get it back, or at least what we're feel, we're capable of being able to reimburse.
Absolutely.
But it'd be better if we had the cold hard figures.
Absolutely. I will get with our treasurer, and we will get that taken care of. Yes, sir.
That's what I was saying to start with.
I would personally like to see how much money that you put in it personally.
Right.
Not, not what your, not what your fundraising was, but how much individually...
Oh, yes, sir. That's all accounted for. We can account for every dime.
Yes, you should.
But however, I would like to say one thing. Whether the money was raised or not, it's still Band Booster money that we're out, that could go back to the program.
But we didn't gain anything from doing this.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say. We, it's not like we took it in pocket.
No, but your officer did cancel the trip and not give us a chance to reschedule so that we could work something out to maybe get a full refund.
Well, I mean, I, I watched, I watched the, the video on YouTube, and I thought it was a clown show, just to be honest with you, because I, I honestly, I support him 100% on what he did.
Yes, sir, and you're entitled to your opinion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, but...
I agree with Mr. Ball.
He, I mean... He, I mean, he was looking out for your kids. And that's, that's his job. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes we don't do the things the way we ought to do them. I, I understand that and I, I understand that you probably worked hard for every penny in there. And, and I mean, if it, if I, if it was coming, if I had took it from you, then, then I, I feel like the travel agency is liable to you.
Absolutely, and we felt that way too. However, because it was cancelled two days before we were scheduled to leave, which voided the contract, that was where we thought we should have the ability to reschedule to get us out of that 30-day clause. If we'd have rescheduled, then maybe we could have cancelled and gotten a full refund.
He, he had to act on the, on the liability of our students.
Well, I know, I understand that things were changing, things were changing a hundred miles an hour.
Yes.
And. I mean, the thing, I, I would like to see you get every penny back. But what, what, I mean, it's just, just to say that Dr. Brown was the one who made the contract.
Or broke it.
Well, or broke it, I mean, but he, he did it. I don't feel like, I don't feel like he benefited from it.
No.
Or the school system benefited from it. It's not like we took your money, but we, I mean, that's just how I feel about it. But if you put money in personally, I would really like to see you get your money back.
Right, I think everybody.
Yeah. For each parent that wrote $750, I think that person should get it back.
Exactly.
That's my personal view.
And I, I mean, I've, I've, I've heard hundreds of rumors about this deal. And, and I, I would really like to get to the bottom of some of them. I mean, I've heard, and I'm going to say this, this is a rumor. I've heard there were eight band members gone and 15 parents. I'm just telling you, that's what I've heard.
No, sir.
And, and I don't know how many were gone or, or anything, but that, I'm just telling you, there's rumors floating everywhere. And it's hard to make a decision when.
Absolutely, and I, and that is very.
I would love to have the facts.
Yes.
And we would be glad to come sit down in mid-week and show you the facts.
Right, I agree.
We, we welcome that. Because I'm sure we're, we get hit with the same rumors. So-and-so said this about you. We're, we're more than happy to clear up everything.
That's something, ma'am, Chair, that, again, Madam Clerk and I could sit down and give those numbers. Hopefully between their information and we'll reach out to Mr. Shifley to see if he's got anything to add for us. And we'll try to put all that together. So, I, I make a motion, we continue this until all the facts are in and we see, see what personally was given and got the money.
All right, and we will provide you with that information before the next meeting and plenty of time for you to look over it.
That would be great.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
And thank you for coming this evening and thank you for your time and.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work with the band.
Contact.
Yes, all right, thank you.
And I hope you get it going in New York.
And we appreciate everything you've done.
Oh, well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, I have a number two supplemental pay during the pandemic. The CARES Act offers financial assistance to school divisions to address unique needs during the COVID-19 pandemic. One of these needs that school divisions across the Commonwealth are addressing with these funds is supplemental pay for our frontline staff. I'm going to change this recommendation, Madam Chair, from what I have wrote here, if you'll bear with me. What I'd like to have is this in three pieces. The first piece being teachers and aides offering the six days for their work as far as coming in, ready packets, securing those packets, getting that information dealt with. And again, this timeframe, Madam Chair, that I'm recommending is March the 17th through June the 8th overall for our employees. But for our teachers and aides for this time period, six days. Bus drivers, cafeteria staff, employees who volunteered for prep and/or delivery of our food on those days that we fed students, $50 a day as well. And then 11 and 12-month employees who, again, report to work onsite during that time span. And I'll share with, with Madam Chair and board members that personally I, I will decline this option and the assistant superintendent, Mr. Fletcher, also, you know, is declining this option. But again, for those 11 and 12-month employees who report onsite, deal with the public and so forth, and keep us moving forward during that time, again, for those days that they report onsite, $50 during that time period, from March the 17th through June the 8th. I would recommend and have it noted that with our June 7th board meeting, that we, as a board, review this, see what direction we need to go in at that point in time. I think by then we'll have a much better grip on where we're headed to as far as summer feeding, summer school, if that's available or not, maybe even some direction on what starting the next school year may look like. I don't think we can make a blanket statement right now to cover us from now until the end of the pandemic, but I do think it would be appropriate for us to break this up into sections. And with that being said, Madam Chair, I know there's a lot of information, but again, the timeframe that I would like noted is March the 17th through June the 8th. And I asked Madam Clerk if she was able to get all that.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this? Thank you, Mr. Bostick, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, roll call vote, Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
And Mr. Sacagawea?
Yes.
And Mr. Ball?
Yes.
And Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Dr. Brown, and I hope that this personally will help our people that are coming out and doing and showing up and doing their part. And this should go back into the community and have a trickle-down effect. And this is, I appreciate it.
I would like to say that I would like to commend the ones that are coming out.
Exactly.
Yes.
And doing the work.
Yes, they deserve, they deserve a hand clap there.
Yes, okay.
Madam Chair, on behalf of the employees, thank you all. I know they will appreciate it.
Thank God, pretty much.
We thank everyone and we're proud of all of our employees.
Our work, our opinion, and it shows, it shows, you know, what's going on.
We have a lot of employees that, you know, were sent home because of reasons beyond their, their control and a lot of them would like to be there and they'll be back when, when, when the environment changes so they can. And I'm sure they're, they're doing their part too, so we thank all those. Okay, Dr. Brown, we're down to the resolution regarding the suspension of the school board policies.
Yes, ma'am, Chair, this is a document that has been provided to us from the BSBA. It's a document that school divisions across the Commonwealth are considering for adoption. And basically, the legislature of the Commonwealth of Virginia suspended various laws pertaining to the operation of public schools in the Commonwealth. Additionally, the state superintendent of destruction has been given the authority to suspend and/or modify instructional and operational requirements for schools. With this shared, the Virginia School Board Association has constructed the attached resolution for school boards across the Commonwealth to consider for adoption. In summary, Russell County Public Schools has active policies, regulations and procedures that are in place due to these aforementioned laws that are now suspended. This resolution simply aligns the operation of public schools with the suspension of said laws and the institution of potential temporary laws. And Madam Chair, I'm more than happy to read this document if you'd like. Whereas on March the 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the novel coronavirus outbreak a pandemic. And whereas on March the 12th, 2020, Governor Ralph Northern issued Executive Order 51 declaring a state of emergency, that executive order stated that the anticipated effects of the COVID-19 constitute a disaster and directed local governments, which includes school boards, to render appropriate assistance to prepare for the event, to alleviate any conditions resulting from the situation and to implement recovery and mitigation operations and activities so as to return impact, impacted areas, excuse me, to pre-event condition as much as possible. And whereas Executive Order 51 authorized the executive branch of agencies, including the Virginia Department of Education, to waive any state regulations as appropriate. And whereas on March the 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency in response to the spread of COVID-19. And whereas on March the 13th, 2020, Governor Northern ordered all K-12 schools to close for a minimum of two weeks. Whereas on March the 13th, 2020, Virginia's superintendent of public instruction encouraged local school divisions to consider options and ideas to engage students in reading, thinking and learning while schools were closed. And whereas on March the 18th, 2020, H.R. 6201 was passed by the United States Congress and signed into law by the President, H.R. 2201, now P.L. 116-127, contains the Emergency Pack Sick Leave Act and the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act Expansion Act, both of which can be in effect until, or will be in effect until, December 31st, 2020. And whereas on March 23rd, 2020, Governor Northern issued Executive Order 53, which closed all public schools throughout the Commonwealth for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas on March the 30th, the United States Department of Education gave permission to Virginia to cancel federally mandated standards of learning tests during the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas on March 27th, 2020, Virginia's superintendent of public instruction stated in Superintendent's Memo 082-28, Attachment A, that he will provide as much flexibility as prudent and allowable by the Code of Virginia for students currently enrolled and graduating with the 2019-2020 code of work. And whereas P.L. 116-127 also contains the Code of 19 Child Nutrition Response Act, which gives the Secretary of Agriculture the authority to grant waivers related to the Richard D. Russell National School Lunch Act, which authorities, which authority expires on September the 30th, 2020. And whereas Virginia's superintendent of public instruction has announced that numerous regulatory requirements will be waived as authorized by Executive Order 51. Whereas on April the 2nd, 2020, the Virginia Board of Education indicated its approval for waiving certain regulatory requirements regarding awarding standard units of credit and locally awarded verified credit. And whereas additional waivers for existing state and federal regulations and changes to state and federal laws may be announcing during, may be announced during the pandemic. Whereas many Russell County school board policies reflect requirements of state and federal laws and regulations that have already been waived or may be waived because of the pandemic. And whereas Russell County School Board's usual practice is to make changes to policies only after the proposed policy change is considered at two school board meetings. And whereas the Russell County School Board needs to be able to adopt school division operations to rapid changes in law and regulation. And whereas enforcing the requirements of existing policies could result in outcomes inconsistent with current laws and regulations as they exist after waivers. Now therefore be resolved that the Russell County School Board suspends such policies or provisions within policies which reflect legal and/or regulatory requirements that have been waived by the governmental authority which enacts those requirements. And therefore, now therefore be it further resolved that the suspension of policies of the Russell County School Board is in effect for the duration of time that the waiver for the laws and/or regulations reflected in the policies are waived. And now for it to be further resolved that the superintendent is directed to inform the school board of any regulations that are suspended by the superintendent and the duration of such suspensions. And therefore be it further resolved that the Russell County School Board will comply with temporary laws and regulations without enacting policy to implement those laws and regulations. And now therefore be it further resolved that the execution of this resolution is conclusive evidence of the Russell County School Board's approval of this action, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I make a motion that we adopt this.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, all in favor?
Aye.
You have to have a second reading on that.
Do you want to read that again?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, Madam Chair.
I didn't get all that.
That's, that's quite the longest, that's by far the longest resolution I've had. I guess the privilege of reading.
Okay, do you have a coronavirus update for us?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, an information item, we have two. The first one being the coronavirus update. Just some positive information in, in the middle of this situation that we're in across the Commonwealth and Russell County and our great nation. Our summer feeding program is, is, is continuing. We will be feeding into the summer. With that being said, a number for the board, a number of meals that have been served through today, 1,000, excuse me, 102,000, 138. Again, 102,138, 102,138. Meals have been served by our frontline folks with our cafeteria staff, those volunteers that have come in to prepare and deliver along with the assistance of our bus drivers to get those meals out to our families. So very proud of that. The EBT-P cards that we've heard about, that information has been uploaded. We have three groups, one group that already receives tantamount benefits that will be simply added to those cards. Another group that receive free reduced lunch through application processes. We have uploaded that information and with CDP, schools of Copper Creek Elementary and Castlewood Elementary, every student there, that information has been uploaded as well. And all those students will receive, again, EBT-P cards. To the total of 2,476 students receiving benefits, 2,476. And with that being $370 per card, you're looking at a little less than a million dollars that has been directed to the families here in Russell County. We're very excited about that. Instructional plans for FY '21 are underway. We've been working for the last several weeks with our Google Team members to look at expanding professional development, enhancing professional development for our teachers so that in the event that, again, there's so many things unknown right now, Madam Chair, but in the event that we have to start FY '21 in a hybrid mode or in a mode where we have to do virtual again. Again, things are going to be different. We're going to have to be dealing with new instruction and we're going to have to be dealing with graded material and students being held accountable for that. So again, we're working with our team to really bring forth some enhanced professional development for our teachers and instructional staff. In addition to that, we haven't forgotten about our parents and students. We're also going to reach out to them and provide some professional development or community development there for them in regards to using those different formats or platforms that are available for us. FEMA, again, that is another option or opportunity for Russell County public schools. We have sent through a FEMA webinar to deal with allowable expenses that we can claim for reimbursement. So Madam Clerk and I have sent through that and Madam Clerk has went through the process of establishing our accounts and getting that in place. So we'll be moving forward with that as it's appropriate. Our CARES application that I spoke of earlier in regards to our employees and supplemental pay for those individuals. The CARES application, we've received a direction from Virginia, Richmond and the Virginia Department of Education. Virginia has received their allotment, will be receiving an application on the 11th to apply for those funds. For Russell County, it'll be a little over a million dollars worth of funding that is designed to enhance technical support and the continuation for us to provide assistance to our staff and retain staff. With that being said, again, $1,051,083.18 will be the Russell County part of that document. Virtual graduation plans, been working with the high school principals on options. We don't want this to get away from us as far as the concern about not being able to do anything at all in the immediate future as far as the traditional graduation. We've had conversations with the state superintendent and Secretary of Education and it appears that anything through the end of July is extremely unlikely. So with that being said, we're making. So, with that being said, we're making plans for a, a drive-through type graduation opportunity for our students while we still have them here in Russell County, before we leave them or lose them, they leave us, uh, for college and the military and, and those types of things. So our hope is that in the, uh, in August, maybe in the fall, hopefully, we'll be able to bring them back and recognize them and thank them and give them the opportunity that they deserve. But again, I, I just did not want, uh, our students to get away from us and us not having an opportunity to capture the class of 2020. Um, finally, school openings, uh, for FY21. I, I touched base on that with a conversation with Secretary of Education Carney and, uh, the state superintendent. Uh, and we're, we're making plans for every option. Much more intense work now than a lot of traditional year is for us actually. Uh, we're looking at, uh, a traditional opening, we're looking at a virtual opening, and we're also making plans for a hybrid opening where we would combine both those ideas. Uh, it's just too early to tell right now, but whatever we have to do, I can promise you that Russell County Public Schools will be prepared. We're not the 12th best school division in the state by accident.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Dr. Brown, for that update. Do we have any question? Okay, we're down to first reading of the policies.
Uh, again, Madam Chair, an opportunity for some semblance of, uh, normalcy here. This is an item that we've actually moved twice now due to the, uh, the, uh, COVID-19 issue pandemic, but now with the resolution that the Board of Supervisors approved, we're allowed to move forward with these types of, uh, business items. As a member of the Virginia School Board Association, Russell County Public Schools periodically receives VSBA policy updates to be examined by our school board members for implementation in Russell County Public Schools Policy Manual. The policies under consideration can be seen under the policy tab on board docs. So again, as a reminder, it's been about six months since we've done this, but as you click on policies, you'll have an opportunity there for a drop-down menu, and then you have draft. If you click on that, you'll have our categories, and then within those categories, as you click on those, you'll have any changes that happen to occur. So the very first policy that changes, nothing in Section A, but in Section B, Policy BCF happens to be new, or excuse me, modified. So we click on that, and you'll see in red, it's a little dark right now, but when you get it there in front of you, you'll see in red those things that are going to be changed, added, deleted. Uh, there's also strike throughs there to indicate those words, again, that want to be dropped. So again, you'll progress through that. In Section D, it looks like you have three policies. Section C, uh, none. And again, as you progress through these, you'll see those policies that, uh, again, need your attention, okay? So again, just wanted to present that information, uh, Madam Chair. Again, it's an information item, so, uh, we do not have to, uh, move forward with anything tonight, no motion or anything of that nature is needed. It will be on the agenda with our June meeting, Madam Chair, and it will be there again as a second reading, and that will be for action.
Right, so if everyone needs to go through them, and if you have any question or whatever, we will address it.
If not.
At our June. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Okay, we're to our sales tax.
Sales tax for March and April.
March and April.
Any attachments?
Yes. Sales tax for March. $329,818.18 for March and April, $316,062.04 for April.
Madam Chair, I would, uh, again, Sheriff of the Board, to remember the fact that we are too much behind, so we're, we're really trailing there. So the, excuse me, the impact, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic we had, COVID-19 pandemic, we haven't seen on that yet.
Have you ever made this report? Does the board have an opportunity to see the maintenance report? Is there a question? Spin it to report? Our future agenda items?
Uh, again, Madam Chair, we'll have the second reading of our policies. And again, I'll ask Madam Clerk to coordinate with the, uh, LHS booster, main booster group so that we can look at their information. And then I'll also reach out to Mr. Shively, President of the Travel Agency, get that information, uh, nailed down so that we can put all that together, bring that back to the Board for the June meeting. Is that a local travel agency? Out of North Carolina.
Does the board have any future items that you want to? Mr. Boston? Mr. Parsons, Gibson?
Not at the time.
Okay. Uh, I would like, uh, to mention to you, Dr. Brown, and I thought of it today and called you, uh, to recognize our business partners that have shared in Russell County schools throughout the years. And we did have a event scheduled, April the 8th, and Mr. Fletcher, he usually works with, uh, with our business partners, and we haven't been able to appropriately recognize them, but as a board, we do appreciate them, and we will put something together in remembrance of that.
Yes, Madam Chair. Do you mind moving to the call? I'll work on a press release with, yeah, now with Ms. Powers to see if we can get that in the paper as a thank you. We'll get some specifics as far as the total amount of money that was received, and how many grants that was distributed into. The typical information that we shared at our lunch, and I'll go ahead and put that in a press release. I'll ask Ms. Powers to work with me on that.
That would be great to Dr. Brown. And I would also like to thank Senator Chatham for being with us this evening, and we appreciate having you back in Russell County, safe and sound, and we thank you for all that you do for us when you're in Richmond and when you're here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'd like to thank them. I still have a delicious meal over here.
It was very good.
It was great.
That's the first I've had of Nans a long time. I have truly Nans. And I hope they survive COVID because I really appreciate Tim and their team out there for what they do. Okay? Uh, our next board meeting is scheduled, June?
It's a miracle.
June 7th, is it?
Uh, yeah, I think the 4th is not accurate.
Oh, is, is it not accurate?
I don't believe, Madam Chair, let me take a quick look at that, I apologize.
First Thursday?
Yeah. Looks, no, it is June the 4th.
It's June 4th, okay.
All right. June 4th. So does that, uh, motion about, may need to change? 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th. June the 8th will be on that Monday, so that's when that will end. And that'll give Madam Clerk an opportunity to hear what the board has to say on the 4th to make whatever adjustments. Is that acceptable with your time window, Madam Clerk? I don't think we have to, Mr. Gibson, unless the board just wishes to.
Oh, okay, we might want to change it to the June 8th, do you think?
Again, it's up to the board, but I think that works within Madam, uh, Clerk's, uh, timeframe, so she can probably make that work for us.
So we can leave it the 7th, or you want to fit it to the 5th, Dr. Brown?
I would just leave it the way that we have it. It could be that we're going to reevaluate pay through the 8th.
The 8th.
And then that'll give us time to take whatever the board chooses to do on the 4th, make those adjustments and get that in place for the 9th.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. If nothing else with our board, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Say.
That was in a hurry, Mr. Boston. Thank you. Second, Mr. Parker. Okay, all in favor?
Bye.